I think she may be, but um hold on, I I think she may be. Do you want to skip to another item and then we'll come back to the oh, we can't because we have to get the other two back?
Yeah. Yeah, I just I, you know.
Hey, while we're waiting, can you explain the 300 versus 500 limit?
Well, one has to do with, and I probably get them wrong, one has to do with of financial. The 300, I believe, is if anything's within 300 feet of you financially. And the other has to do with something that I'm not positive the 500 is what.
It's usually a notification for um it's usually associated with notice, public notification of a meeting or interest and interested parties list.
Yeah. But I I'll um. I'll double check again. Greg, with the city attorney, why the what's the distinction between the two? Because I know the the other reason you would recuse yourself as if you had a member working for Meritage, for example, or the architectural firm, you would obviously have to recuse yourself, but that's not the case here. So it's it's I just can't remember what the distinction is, why the two different radius.
I think she's okay.
Good, okay.
Nancy? I'm okay?
Yes.
Yay.
Otter Street.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, Dave, since the recording started late, just went to state for the record that Commissioner Baker and Commissioner R. Seaver accused themselves from item A on the discussion calendar.
Dave, before before we move on, there's a chat in the box asking about how to raise hand. I don't know if Mike Brown is representing somebody today or if he's a just here as a citizen, so.
Okay.
Help him, I don't I don't know.
Mike, if you can't find the hand raise icon, if you do have a comment, you just kind of want to wave your hand, I'll be on the lookout and I'll 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 call your name out. And that way we can do it um for public comment.
So now you can you all see the map that I have on my shared screen?
No.
No?
No.
Uh oh. Now, what did I do wrong?
I don't think you're sharing your screen.
What do you want me to share for you? Is it the exhibit you would like me to share?
Yeah, I'm trying to share this.
Here, I'll do I'll share the exhibit, the one that's in the staff report.
Well, it's it's this um. It's a PowerPoint presentation that I put together.
A presentation, I have it up, I'll share my screen, Dave.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
What's on?
Is it is it working now?
Yeah.
Can I control it, Ashley?
No.
Okay, so anyhow, the the screen that's up now shows the lots that are being acquired by Meritage Homes. The ones that are light green are being acquired, the ones that are gray are not. And if you add all those up, there's 148 lots minus some of the duplex lots. And those are the ones that are sort of in a darker green on numerous corners. But that's to give you the area of of where the lots are that they're acquiring. And you can see they're due west of the new park that's being built out in the Stone Throw area. So just to give you some perspective and um. Let's see, let me see what else I have, okay. All right, so as I started to mention, this is the third set of model designs that the planning commission has been asked to approve. The original ones for homes by town were considered by approved by the planning commission in 2017. The planning commission subsequently approved for the Aspire project, which is part of the Stone Throw, their models in 2019. So I've already mentioned Meritage purchase purchased these lots from Homes by Town, was the parent of the Stone Throw subdivision. There's a typo in the staff report because it's not the January 24, 2019 meeting, but the June 29, 2021 meeting, we had a DRC meeting where the models were reviewed by the DRC. There were basically three comments. Two of them are similar, they have to do with the universal design and visitability, which are concerns that have been expressed by the planning commission and are part of the conditions of approval, at least the universal design one is. And essentially, what it says is that the developer has to provide that ability to a potential buyer that they would modify the home to meet the universal design requirements. Visitability, which Commissioner Baker is sort of the one that coined that phrase as far as my hearing of it, is related to that, but it's the ability for someone to come and visit you and not have raised thresholds and steps and other other hindrances to someone who is confined to wheelchair or has some sort of other disability where climbing steps and getting over a threshold can be difficult. That is not a condition of approval, but as I said, it's something that's been brought up before. And then the third thing was the fact that there needed to be a more there needed to be more variety in the color schemes that were proposed. The commission, I mean, the DRC agreed with staff that the color schemes did not show enough variety and that there were not enough color schemes. And so that was the third one, the fourth one, which again, not a condition of approval, but something that was suggested is possibly providing for a model that had the capabilities for multi-generation. At the meeting, the representative from Meritage Homes, who's here tonight, indicated that their company does not offer that kind of option to potential buyers. And because it's not a condition of approval.
I'm sorry, which slide did you want me on?
Well, the second one.
Still the second, okay.
Yeah, you can you can do that one, yeah. That that second slide, which I'll talk about here in my staff presentation. So when I started meeting with Meritage, we've gone sort of through an evolution on the plans. Originally, there had they still had they only have three architectural styles, Santa Barbara, coastal and farmhouse. And they had fewer elevations, much fewer elevations. Now they have as many as 47 elevations when you include enhanced and the elevations for duets. This slide shows all the different plans that are available. And a lot of them are just subtle differences from one to the next, but nevertheless, they are different. And the condition of approval that was part of the Homes by Town subdivision called for their needing to have four different models and three different elevations. Well, in this case, they've done three different model types. Again, Santa Barbara, coastal and farmhouse and many, many more elevations. So when I presented this to the DRC, I I indicated that I thought they met the intent of that condition by having way more than 12 elevations total. So that was an issue that I felt was resolved. Since the DRC meeting, they have increased the number of color schemes to 15. They are at the end of the very large attachment that we were unable to send you, but you were able to link online to. And the colors have gotten more diverse. There's now some, there's a reddish color that's part of the farmhouse design. And and that's a plus that you also see that the body colors are now not just in the sort of beige, gray, white categories. There's there's more diversity. As I mentioned, we we had a series of meetings with Meritage till we got to the point that was was what was presented to the DRC. Some of the changes they made were to include more horizontal and vertical siding as sort of a a veneer that was a part of the farmhouse and coastal elevations. It came up with a fully sided farmhouse design, which has a board and baton look. And they increased the roof pitch on the farmhouse from four and 12 to five and 12, again, to give some diversity between it and the coastal design, which are somewhat similar. And then they also provided enhanced elevations. And for those new commissioners, enhanced elevations are located on corner lots. And they're designed to enhance that side elevation that faces the secondary street. And so rather than just have a blank flat wall that often you have between two interior lots, this enhanced elevation gives a little better look. And in this case, you'll see in the enhanced elevations that on all of them, they pop out a second floor window feature to break up that flatness. And on some of the single story, you'll see that the veneer it is wrapped around from the front all the way down the side elevation or a portion of the side elevation, again, to give a better look to that secondary street than would exist otherwise. They've they've addressed all of the comments from the DRC. I have a comment in here again about the what Meritage Homes indicates that they do offer universal design as part of the purchasing of a new home. And if a buyer is interested in those features, they will work with that buyer to provide that. Again, no nothing being done for visitability, I think. And I may be speaking out of term, Mark wasn't real familiar with that term. And honestly, until Lisa Baker brought it up, neither was I. And it's something that we can look at as conditions of approval for future subdivisions. And they don't, as I mentioned, provide multi-generation. The landscaping and fencing, they do have a plan that I've briefly looked at. I need to look at it in greater detail. There's a condition of approval that will allow me to do that. I did notice that they are using steel posts, which has been a regular requirement for fencing. And that's to add some longevity to the fence so that the buyers of the homes aren't forced to replace the fencing as quickly as possible. And it extends the life. They are falling within the existing plan development overlay, which was approved back when the subdivision for Stone Throw first came forward, which means they're not asking for any reductions in side yards or front yards or lot coverage or backyard setbacks that weren't already approved by the planning commission and city council. So there's nothing new there. I do mention, and it is a condition of approval, that I think the planning commission could easily delete tonight. There is an affordable housing requirement that was that is a condition of all new developments of more than 15 lots. I put it in as a condition as just a reminder. I think Meritage Homes is now well aware of the obligation that they have to meet that and what that entails. And so that condition number three could be deleted. I did talk to Mr. Engstrom about the condition number six, which has to do with providing an all-weather path leading from the street through the landscape strip to the interior sidewalk. And then ultimately, there was a separate pathway leading from the sidewalk to the house itself. He did mention that it is essentially true that right now, when you go out and drive through that subdivision, where you see that little pathway through the landscaping is for the lots that have alley access, which means the garage is off the back and not the front. And so it's a commission call really as to whether or not you want to require that. The intent of that is, you probably know, when you park a car on the street, people have a tendency to just walk through your landscaping, or in this case, the city's landscaping, leading to the homeowner's house. And so if you provide a path, there's some hope that the visitor will use that path rather than just trample the landscaping. But again, that's a that's a call that the commission can make as to whether or not you want to keep condition number six. Pretty much everything else is standard that we've required for the other developments. I restated that the downspouts have to be painted to match the color of the adjacent building material. And that that avoids making a downspout an accent feature and really just helps it go away to some extent. And they also have to wrap the veneer around to the side yard fence. That is a condition of the original subdivision. What I found out in the field is oftentimes when they get to the PG and E meters, they stop the veneer. And there is no exception, they can run the veneer behind the PG and E meters. It does add a little more labor to the cost of having to make the veneer work. But again, the standard condition of approval is that they have to wrap it around to the fences and not stop it short of the fence. And with that, I will try to answer any questions you might have.
Dave, I had a question with regards to affordable housing. Anything on that from this particular plan that we have?
So so they're gonna they are obligated, as is Homes by Town, to meet the affordable housing requirement. Meritage Homes on that first slide that we had up, there are some duets or duplex lots. Those are the moderates that have to be provided within the subdivision itself. And I don't remember, and maybe I'm sure Mark does, which ones they're obligated to do and which ones Homes by Town agreed to do as part of the purchase of the 148 lots. And then Meritage has to pay or Homes by Town, Meritage has indicated it's their responsibility. When they go to record a final map for phases three, four or five, there is an obligation as part of that recording to give the city a lump sum fee for affordable housing. And then there's also an obligation as each home receives a certificate of occupancy that they pay a smaller fee. So Meritage knows that they're going to be on the hook for a lump sum payment. And they're also on the hook to know that each individual house, as it gets to that point where it's certificate of occupancies, is requested that they have to pay the smaller fee. So as I said, I really threw in condition number three in the discussion as a staff report is just a reminder of that obligation, which, as I said, I'm sure Meritage Homes at this point is well aware of.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave.
Any other commissioners have questions for Dave? Dave, the backup, maybe go a little bit higher level. The the conditions of approval for the other projects were upwards of 65 conditions, right?
Yeah, and all of those still apply, Greg. These are all new conditions that you're being asked to add.
Okay.
So they're not a restatement of old ones, but new ones that are site specific to this 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 set of models.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was trying to confirm. And that is done just by of the prior condition, because I didn't see anything in here.
So so they we have to agree to them being assigned the part of the development agreement. Their obligations of the development agreement, which are the conditions of approval and other obligations. So the council agreed, I believe, at their last meeting for assigning to Meritage Homes the the ability to move forward. And and as part of that assignment, Meritage Homes then agrees to comply with all of the conditions that are in the development agreement. So and so that covers that end of it. And as I said, these these additional conditions are specific to the models themselves.
Perfect, that's that's what I wanted to confirm. Should we open it up to public comment before or after we the presentation by?
I'd ask Mark, Mark, are you and Kevin planning on doing a presentation?
Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, I I know Mark was.
Yeah, yeah, this is Mark Eglington, Meritage Homes. Thank you, everybody, for having us here tonight. I don't really have, Dave, you did such a thorough job with covering all the points and everything. And we don't really have a prepared presentation. You know, we went through with you and, you know, pretty much everything. And I appreciate all your assistance. And I briefly, you know, David mentioned there's 19 single-story, two-story homes ranging from 1475 to 3168 square feet. There's three elevation styles and we had three paint schemes for each. And working with Dave, we redesigned or redid our standard color palette and added three paint schemes, as I think you mentioned, for both the coastal and farmhouse. So if I did my math correctly, with the number of floor plans, number of elevations, the number of paint schemes, there's 285 possible combinations for the 148 lots. So there's a, you know, quite a bit of variety and design designing the homes to be distinctive, but also compatible with other homes and the homes within the community. I think Dave's notes here, his report are pretty thorough and cover many of the things we put have included in the presentation. So I didn't have anything else to add unless anybody had any questions for me. Or the architect Kevin Crook is on the call also. And Kevin, I don't know if you had anything that you'd like to say or or to add?
No, other than four of the plans, we have chosen to add a fourth elevation style to the all-sighting elevations. So that even adds to the number of possibilities. But I don't have a formal presentation, although I'm here for any questions, certainly.
And Mark, can I apologize? I I'm working with another Mark named Engstrom and Angle, and I keep referring to you by his last name instead of yours.
Quite all right, I've been that my last name's pretty tough anyway, I've been called a lot of different. Commissioners, any questions for them to answer before we go to public comments? And I did want to say to apologize, Dave, you had mentioned condition number three. It stated right now that Homes by Town shall pay in in Luthy. And if don't strike that, as Dave suggested, if it could be amended at least to indicate that Meritage is obligated with the recording final to pay that fees. I think I think David addressed that, but I just wanted to clarify a little bit. Okay, thank you. And and Dave, when it comes time to vote, will you remind us about that? To see whether or not we wanted to strike it or. So let's open up the public comment at 7:07. The comments.
I see Kate Ladish and Mike Brown with their hands up.
Okay, let's start with Kate.
Thank you, Commissioner Contreras, Kate Ladish, 400 Morgan Street, number 21. And I was want to start by thanking applicant, staff and design review committee and the commissioners for for having a variety of different designs and in making sure that they work that they work together and as well as is within the architectural standards already decided upon. A couple of points, I really appreciate that the design review committee already brought up the issues of universal design and visitability. You'll be unsurprised to hear that those continue to be very important issues. I have some concerns about kind of just just having a nod to universal design of the potential home buyers are allowed or presented a checklist from which they can choose. If they don't choose to include features that create universal design so that people who have some access and functional needs can use the house, we're we're locked into that house not being accessible for the lifetime of the house. And so as we build build a lot of our housing stock, as as people don't make those choices, we limit their ability, limit our city's ability to for people to, for example, age and place. Because if there is even say a single step going in or out of a house, that's not, that doesn't work. Say if you're using a wheelchair or a walker or have other situations. So I couldn't quite tell in these elevations if there were single steps going in and out. But I would be I would enthusiastically urge the planning commission to to make sure that there are not steps going in or out of these. And also to look at, for example, the width of bathroom doors. I appreciate that there's a mix, there's some single-story and two-story homes. With the single stories, that makes it so that there are bedrooms on the the one and only story. With two-story homes, that when we built a lot of two-story homes that just have bedrooms on the second story, that's really tough for people who who can't get up and downstairs or might not be able to get up and downstairs in the future. And so let's see, a couple other issues. One is that as there's increasing discussion around fire safety, home hardening and the different fire safe councils, that I urge the planning commission and the applicant to consider some taking some steps that would increase the the fire safety design of the home. So, for example, not having a combustible fence that goes right up to the house, perhaps where the fence makes contact with the house, to have something that's not combustible, like a wrought iron fence right there. The the idea is to have not have combustible material within five feet of a structure. And that there there are other things to consider, for example, not having exposed eaves. And and so a couple other other quick points. One is that the elevations don't show solar panels. And my understanding, which may or may not be correct, but is that solar panels need to need to be included. And so I just want to make sure that those those are actually included in the design, even though I'm not seeing them on the elevations. And in the others, that I continue to be enthusiastic about duets being included as much as possible. I think those are only allowed on corner lots, if that's true. And so I just want to make sure that we're maximizing that. Thank you.
And they do, as of January 1, 2020, any permits pulled after that date, you have to provide solar. So these homes will all have solar. It it doesn't have to be a system that's large enough for the house, but it has to be a minimum size.
Thanks, Kate. Ashley, who's next?
We had Mike Brown with his hand up next.
Mike, please proceed.
Hi, my name is Mike Brown of 460 Main Street. I've been a proud member of the Winter's community for 44 years. Unfortunately, for those 44 years, 20 of those years have been historic droughts. For the state of California, the average household in California uses 85 gallons of water per person per day. With an occupancy of three persons, a house that is this housing project of 148 homes will add an additional 13.7 million gallons of water per year that the city of Winter needs to provide. If the occupancy is four, that moves up to 18.7 million gallons of water. I would I would have an interest to know where you think that's going to come from, because water is not a producible resource. While the city asks us to save water as much as possible, that our lounge grow brown, don't flush our toilets, but just only when necessary, and don't wash our cars. How can the city be entertaining an additional 148 dwellings at this particular time? In closing, the planning commission's job is to represent the interests of the citizens, not of the city council or the or the developers. We're only going to take the money and run and leave us holding the bag with 13.7 million gallons of additional water per year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Actually, we have another, anybody else?
And we actually have Assistant City Attorney Joanna Jen with her hand up.
Okay.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm actually here on my own time, but I wanted to address the question about the 300 feet versus 500 feet. The first, the 300 feet is a distance requirement for notice to affected property owners before a public hearing is required under the planning and zoning law. And the 500 feet is a distance requirement under the political reform reform act and the FPPC regulations that when a commissioner owns property within 500 feet of a project, that commissioner must recuse himself or herself due to a financial conflict of interest because the financial effect is presumed material.
Thank you, Joanna. Thank you, Joanna. And to the extent that I can speak for the city on the water thing, the this this project has been designed to provide the necessary water. There is a well that's being constructed as part of this overall development that will provide the additional water capacity needed for the city to function within the the requirements of the state. And I know it's, there's a drought and they are designing their landscaping to be drought resistant. And that's part of the state requirement. We by by default have adopted the state landscape design guidelines which call for drought tolerant. And that includes irrigation methods. Short of that, I don't know what else to say. When the subdivision was approved, drought wasn't an issue. And so once they proved that they could provide the water that was necessary, the the project was approved.
Dave, Mike, I'll call back on you in a minute, but Dave, when those studies happen, that happens, how does that work? In other words, because and I imagine Mike's going to say something along these lines, which is you can drill all the wells you want. Water in the aquifer, you're not going to have, you're not going to be able to get the water. And so I assume that there's been studies that have been done to substantiate, you know, what sort of what sort of drought would have to take place in order to, you know, render, you know, our aquifer or run out of water. All of those things, one, do you know if that's project specific or citywide? And and where would one go to find that?
So the city has a water master plan. I don't know it by heart or but I do know that this is consistent with that plan. And obviously, if the governor puts in restrictions as to water usage, it would obviously limit what each homeowner could could use. But as far as I know, Commissioner Contreras, the aquifer system that we use to get most of our water is 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 fine and hasn't shown any indications that it's it's not going to continue to provide the water that's needed to the community without having to deepen any wells. But it's a question that's better answered by our city engineer who helped work with the designer of the city's waste, I mean, water master plan to make sure that we have adequate water capacity for all of the development that's been approved or could potentially be approved in the city in the future that's within our city limits.
And if I might add, Dave, also, Winters is part of the Yolo Sub Basin Groundwater Agency, which is a collaborative effort among multiple jurisdictions and agencies that comes together specifically to manage the underground aquifer resources. And so we are part of a larger effort that is looking at underground water supply. It's called the Yolo Sub Basin Groundwater Agency, if somebody, if anybody wants to look it up.
Did any other commissioners have any questions on this issue? I know it's public input, but. No, okay. Mike, did you want to?
Well, I mean, I just find it's kind of interesting because I know the homeowners and the property owners east of Highway eighty-nine, opposite the big orchards out there are presently, for the past two summers, their wells have gone dry because of amount of water pulled from 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 the big aquifer. The other side of that is that once you collapse an aquifer like they did in the Central Valley, it's not recoverable. And we keep doing these little pieces and shots at this, oh, it's only thirteen and a half million gallons of water a year. Only it's only eighteen million gallons of water a year. Hey, if this drought goes on another three or four four years, this city has to provide water for its citizens. And where is it going to get it?
Thank you, Mike. Actually, do we have any other input on this?
I am not seeing any other hands up at this time, and I did not receive any written comment on this item.
Okay. Okay, in that case, after all of the, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment period at seven nineteen. Do the commissioners have any questions or any discussion that they want to have before we move on to voting on this item? Okay, I don't I don't see anybody raising their hand or having any questions. I have a couple of questions and comments. So Dave, would you would you say that these new phases are natural extensions of what was already approved? Right, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, so when originally you approved the models for stone throw, the approval was for all three hundred and ninety-five single-family lots plus the nine duplex lots. So the presumption at the time was that's what you were going to see out there. Then since that initial approval in two thousand seventeen, the developer has sold off some of those lots to another developer who doesn't obviously want to build a Homes by Town's product. So they've come in with their own product. So essentially, you're you're sort of doing a revised approval of the original approval to allow this particular builder to substitute their models for the ones that you approved back in two thousand seventeen. And similarly, that's what you did for the Aspire project. You're just substituting a different design on those lots that they've purchased. So it's it's really not starting from scratch. It's a it's a it's a revision for a better way to describe it.
And to the extent that it's been revised, it's all within the kind of the same parameters upon which we approved the last ones, which were diversity in options and looks and in elevations. I mean, all of those things that I think have improved as these new developments have come on, right? The later the development, you see more of those qualities. It's it's obviously consistent with what's being approved now.
Yeah, and with the with the Homes by Town project, there were conditions of approval of the development agreement that applied to all three hundred and ninety-five lots. But at the time, Homes by Town asked the council, and ultimately, the council agreed to allow them to prepare design guidelines for their project alone as sort of an alternative to the strict conditions of approval. And those conditions were amended to allow for that. So all three developers' projects, they've all been evaluated based on those design guidelines that the council agreed to allow as part of the development agreement in two thousand fourteen or fifteen, I can't remember. So that's that's what I've been using is by my guidepost, as well as the city's general design guidelines for the whole city. And everything that you're doing tonight is consistent with what you did in two thousand seventeen and consistent with what you did in two thousand nineteen. And if you approve them tonight, would be consistent with with those as well. So there, we're not asking, haven't been asking anything from this particular set of model homes that we haven't requested previously. That makes makes any sense. I hope it does.
Yeah. And then I guess the last comment I have, and this goes with, I think it applies to some of the conditions. But I think kind of the general, I don't want to say attitude, because I don't think that's the right word to describe it. But our approach to some of the requirements we put on developers and and the construction of these homes, sometimes I feel like we don't always understand that every dollar extra that it costs to construct these homes just gets passed on right onto the consumer, right? The person buying the home. And not only does it get passed on, it gets like, you know, one hundred and twenty-five, one hundred and fifty percent of what the cost was. And so a year or two ago, I read that every thousand dollars that a home goes up, you're excluding thousands of people who can then turn around and buy the homes. And so we have this conflict inherent in what's going on, which is how do you ensure that you have affordable housing while also ensuring that the housing lives up to the community standards that we've we've set up? And so is this comment isn't necessarily directed at these homes, but just in general, I really hope that commissioners and staff in the city is looking at that inherent conflict and picking and choosing the battles and not to beat a dead horse. Metal fence posts, you know, my, I don't think that's where I would go. Some of the landscaping requirements, yeah, I get it. You don't want a bunch of homes with dirt in the front yards. So I can appreciate that one. But again, I think most of all these requirements are reasonable, but we always have to consider it in the context of are we are we artificially inflating prices and thereby not allowing others to come into the market? And so and even when it comes to the visibility, visitability issue, I hundred percent agree. But if we're, which we're not doing here, we're not mandating anything. But at the moment you make it a mandate, you increase the pricing and now that family's not going to be able to buy their first home or, you know, move out of the home they're in. And so it's this constant struggle. I just really hope that everybody's paying attention to that inherent struggle.
And I mean, I I I do consider that, as chair, when I'm working with the developers, that, you know, it is a give and take and that I can't ask them to do everything that maybe we would like to see. But I try to find a compromise that both sides can can support.
And Dave, before before I move on to a vote, can either you answer or the developer answer whether or not there is in fact a step in front of the entry? Kate had asked that.
Yeah, I think it has to do with grading, whether Kevin or Mark, you know, whether that's going to be the case where you'll have to have steps.
Typically, there's a variety of reasons why there's a step into the entryway. There's a function of the finished floor versus the driveway profile and slope and trying to make it all work on lots that have been pre-designed, I guess, and graded to a certain height and pad or whatever. The so there, yes, there there are steps, a typical step that would go into the home. It's not a flush threshold. Then depending on the lot, there would be maybe a step up onto the porch, front porch. I think sidewalk might flow actually into the porches, but it's individual per lot. And the plot plan per lot kind of dictates that, but we're not creating any steps. There's a sidewalk that goes off the driveway and usually that's flat and turns into home. And there's sometimes a step up to the home, depending on the grade, and then another step into the home under the normal threshold scenario. So it's a it's a lot specific. But yes, there will be some kind of step ups. There aren't they aren't designed for accessibility unless you know, there's the the process where the homeowner has in a, as Dave was alluding to, as part of the purchase agreement, there is an addendum that discusses universal design. And those things are gone over with the homeowner at the time to see what can be done to to accommodate their needs.
Thank you. One one other thing, Dave, maybe for future presentations, we can add something into the the packet that just discusses the water aspect of it. You know, just it's conformity with the the water master plan just as a way to keep that present in our minds going forward.
Okay. I will talk to our city engineer about some sort of standard language that I can include.
If those are comments from other commissioners, are we ready to move to a vote? Do we have a motion?
And just for clarification, if you don't delete condition number three, which you don't necessarily have to, just revise it to read prior to recording of the final map for phases three, four, and five, Meritage Homes shall pay and in Lufy, actual fee to be determined prior to recording.
We have a motion, anybody?
I'm not quite sure how to word it. Move that we approve the Meritage Homes plan as presented to the Planning Commission. Is that enough?
Yeah, with the amendment to that one condition.
With the amendment to the amendment, with the condition five, was that it?
Number three.
Number three.
A second. Ashley, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, Commissioner Alto Moreno.
Aye.
Commissioner Northrup.
Aye.
Commissioner Rose.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Contreras.
Aye.
Okay, so passes with two abstaining.
Right, and give Ashley a minute to bring Lisa and Commissioner R. Sebick.
The email has been sent. They should be joining us in a second.
There's Lisa. Looks like we've got both of them back.
Okay, welcome back. Dave, you want to present item B?
So this is a request by Tim and Kate Wordard, and they're being represented by the designer tonight to add a four hundred and seventy, four hundred, four hundred and seventeen foot addition to the rear of the house at twenty East Main Street. For those of you who drive up East Main heading towards Grand Avenue, it's the somewhat monochromatic white house with a really cool second door, second floor porch. It's kind of adjacent to the old sewer treatment plant, which is behind it on Peter Creek. And one of my personal favorites. And the reason it's coming before you is because it shows up in the city's cultural resources inventory as a house of of architectural significance, mainly because of the family that it was originally built for, which is the Wyatts on which the street was named, that's in the new subdivision. And the originally in eighty-five, when the council created a historic preservation commission, it was their duty to review these kind of projects. Ultimately, the commission was absorbed by the planning commission and the duty became yours. Last year, we considered an addition to a house on Russell Street of also historical significance. And there is no square footage minimum as to when something like this has to be brought forward. It really depends on the historical significance of the structure itself. If Ashley, you can bring up the PowerPoint again. I don't know if you can do that.
Dave, you're currently sharing your screen if you want to bring it up.
Oh, okay, hold on. Let's see if I can.
If not, I have it open.
Now, I'm going to try it again. We're going to try it again.
If you go to slideshow.
Yeah, it's being hidden by the.
Or you can just click on the which one you're trying to see. It's down along the side. You can just.
I can do it this way. It'll work. Can you see this, everyone?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so as I mentioned, this is an addition on the rear of the house. Okay, so as I mentioned, this is an addition on the rear of the house. It's an addition that's on the directly behind an addition that was previously approved for this house. It's adding a den. Which I'm not sure if you can see, but there's a darker, heavier line in this area here. Which is off the kitchen, which was added to the house previously. The um. You can see the extension of the addition here in the site elevation. And then um, from the rear, you can see the above picture is before and the below picture is after. It essentially just mimics what was done previously in the form of an addition to this house. And it will have um, similar siding materials, trim materials uh, as the main house itself. It will not be visible from a public street at all. It's only visible really from the rear yard if you're peeking over the fence, which I had to do so I could see it. And um, um, it's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, again, because of its historical significance, this has to be brought to the planning commission for you to approve. The uh, ordinance that put this in place clearly allows you to approve additions to historical structures. We don't have a historic preservation ordinance. This house is not within the one, the historic preservation district, which is the one block on um, Main Street. Where the commercial buildings are. So it's really at your discretion as to whether or not you feel the addition is um, complimentary. To the existing architecture and will not, in your mind significantly or adversely. Impact um, the design of the structure itself. And, and that's pretty much it. It's a very straightforward, single-story addition. And I know Anthony's here, if you have any questions about the design itself.
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
Um, thank you. Is this a public hearing? This is so I'll hold my questions after we get input.
Yes, it's a notice, it's a notice public hearing.
We haven't opened it yet, if you want to, you want to wait, Lisa or?
Yes, um, if you're a, if you're indulgent, I, I'm gonna hold my questions to that.
Okay, uh, so seeing no questions from commissioners, let's open up the public hearing at seven thirty-seven. And Ashley, if you can direct any comments.
I am not seeing any hands up at this time, and I did not receive any written public comments.
Okay, so in that case, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period and open it back up to commissioners. Lisa, do you want to go first?
Sure, I have a couple of questions and Dave, I don't know whether it's you or the, or the architect who is best able to answer. I have two. Uh, the first one is that I noticed that uh, ship black siding and window trim have to be consistent with the other building. Which I totally support, um, but there's no mention about the windows. Do the windows have to be consistent themselves in um, appearance to go with the uh, nature of the balance of the building? Cause that's not mentioned in the conditions. And my second one is, does the creation of this addition actually spark any other code compliance? Or requirements on the building or trigger uh, California updated landscaping?
Uh, not that I'm aware of as far as the second question. It, it has to be uh, larger than this in order to trigger some of those. And it doesn't even fall under the need to, to pay school impact fees because it's under five hundred square feet. And I think Anthony can probably does answer the question about the windows. But to my knowledge, they're, the way I recall seeing them is they're all either single or double hung windows that match the existing windows in the house.
Yeah, um, most of the uh, windows in the house were replaced um, recently with uh, same configuration. They're mostly double hung. There are some fixed stashes. Um, almost all of them have uh, period appropriate uh, mountains and, and trim. And we're the, the seven or so windows, I think that we're adding are that exact same format that's, that's in place with the rest of the house, same product.
Thank you, that's my question.
Sure.
Okay, uh, any other commissioners have questions? Any commissioners want the architect to give some sort of a presentation or are we, are we good to move to a vote?
I'm actually happy to move the approval, um, per the staff recommendation. That's my motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Nancy's second. Can we have a roll call vote, please, Ashley?
Commissioner Altamirino.
Aye.
Commissioner R. Seb.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Northrup.
Aye.
Commissioner Rose.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Contreras.
Aye.
This is unanimously. Congratulations. Go back to the agenda. Dave, you want to, are we continuing item C?
Yeah, so I would like you to do a vote on it. You, you continue it to date certain as August twenty-fourth. I honestly don't expect to have it on the next agenda. I put a notice in the newspaper in anticipation of something happening that unfortunately did not. I've reached out to the applicant a couple of times and it appears that at this point, they're not going to move forward. But just in case that changes, if you continue it to your next meeting, August twenty-fourth. If he does move forward, we won't have to renotice it in the newspaper.
Okay, um, any commissioners wanting to make the motion?
Are you looking to move it to date certain of August twenty-fourth?
Yes.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, okay, um, Ashley, can we do a vote?
Commissioner Altamirino.
Aye.
Commissioner R. Seb.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Northrup.
Aye.
Commissioner Rose.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Contreras.
Aye.
Thank you.
Dave, you want to tee up item D?
Well, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I know we're, we're doing a few things. We're, we're getting appointments to the Affordable Housing Steering Committee.
So this is the uh, MVP veterinary.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I forgot that one, thank you.
Memo concerning the request.
Yep, yep, sorry, I skipped over that one. So it's a discussion item, it's not a public hearing. And it has to do with um, an interpretation of the zoning code. Which I have the authority or my position does, uh, really probably Kathleen acting in behalf of the community development director. To make a decision as to whether or not a uh, particular use is consistent with a listed use. In the zoning code. And in this case, the property is the old pharmacy, which has been vacant now, I believe roughly a year. And a veterinarian, the MVP veterinarian that exists on um, well, it's off the Frontage Road. I always, I take it home half the time and I can't remember the street name, but I think everybody knows where it's located. They want to move to the old pharmacy. And in our form-based code, which this is part of, a listed use that's allowed. Our, our two listed uses that are similar are doctors and dentists. And you could easily make this interpretation that a veterinarian, which is obviously a doctor. Would fall under that category. The um, code allows you to do a site-specific interpretation. And, and the only real issue other than a doctor for doctor is that animals will have to be kept there sometimes overnight. As part of their treatment, or maybe multiple nights as part of their treatment. But I think, again, as you all know, the site is bordered by the city hall on one side, by commercial building on the other side. By a house that's been converted to commercial use on, on the third side. So as far as impacting anyone that's nearby, and again, these animals are all going to be kept inside. They will unlikely not even know that animals are there at night. And so I've, I believe, and I think the commissioner could find that allowing the veterinarian to um, locate in this facility. Would be consistent with what the zoning code permits in the way of doctors and dentists, which are similar in nature. So, so that's the um, that's the issue before you tonight.
Would we have to, or would a study on um, traffic and out of that area be uh, needed?
No, because under the city's form-based code, they actually have more parking than is necessary for doctors and dentists. I'm not saying it's, it's necessarily the correct amount of parking, but it's consistent with what the code requires. And so they actually have surplus parking. And I don't really know, and I don't know if um, Dr. Berger's on this call at all. But um, you know, I, I don't know what their, you know, their patient load is at any given time during the day. You know how many people they have waiting.
Vice Chair Contreras, are you ready to take questions from commissioners? And um, again, this was actually given to us in a packet as a public hearing, but as I'm understanding, it's not a public hearing.
Yeah, it's a, it's a discussion item.
Hey, we should open the discussion. You uh, you want to go ahead and go, Lisa?
Uh, I think the only thing that I would think is that I am supportive of this. I think it's consistent with the form-based code. If you go to Woodland or Vacaville, you'll see veterinarian animal hospitals directly in a town. And it does uh, mean that if you're dropping off your pet, you can get a little shopping in or a meal. So anything that brings business to downtown makes me happy. So um, I'll wait in here uh, to see if any other questions are, are sparked by the uh, other commissioner comments. But that's my comment right now.
I agree with Lisa on that. I agree with Lisa on that. They, it would, it would be a, a great addition to our city.
Anybody else have questions or comments or want to?
I guess I do. Um, I, I, for some reason, I, I like the idea, although I know the people, um, so I like them. So it's, it models a little bit, but um, I just don't know enough about requirements, whether it be physical place. Or, or is there lawn or is there an outside area that's necessary for a vet clinic? I don't, you know, I don't know that um, that, that it qualifies. But you said it qualifies um, because it's similar to a, to a, to a doctor's office. I just didn't know if there's any other requirements um, that were missing here um, that are necessary.
So the, so the use has to provide the required parking, which it does. They're not under any obligation to do anything else to the exterior. I have indicated to Dr. Berger that the cabinet signs that are there now, that were there for the old pharmacy. Are um, non-conforming as to the new standards. They can reface those signs without having to remove them. And I've indicated to the doctor that I would like to see the background of those signs be opaque. So at nighttime, if they do light up the signs, and if, and I'm assuming they're going to want to put some sort of sign face back in there. You would only see individual letters, which gets it closer to what the form-based code is asking for in the way of signage. If they were to remove those cabinets, then they would have to put up new signage that was compliant. But um, she hasn't really indicated one way or the other what their intent is. And the interior stuff is all driven by the building code. So whatever they do to the interior to turn it into a veterinarian. Ha, um, o- office is strictly dri- driven by what the building code requires them to do.
Thank you.
Dave, uh, well, I'll let everybody else go first. Any other, other questions? Dave, what's the citation for, I, I, I'm trying to look up the full language of. I should have done this before, but of, of that DA zoning. Because it, it seems like if, if the language, i- is this open-ended as which includes? I mean, that's not a limiting, may not be a limiting factor, right? So it's just examples, in which case you don't, I don't think you even need seventeen oh four uh, to get you there, right? It's an office.
It's an office, but again, it, it's, it's, you could argue because we do list veterinarians in other zoning districts. That aren't part of the downtown. So we've used that specific term. I wanted you to agree that even though a doctor is not necessarily a veterinarian. It could still fall under that umbrella. And it's not a kennel, which if it were, I would have a different opinion as to whether it should be a permitted use. Because elsewhere in the city where kennels are allowed, it's a conditional use. And that, and so that's really why it's in front of you. If we didn't have any language elsewhere in our code that specifically mentioned veterinarians, I would have taken a different position altogether.
And, and the, the reason I ask is because I, I think we've talked about this. I don't like that seventeen uh, that, that section. I, I, the idea that we can kind of willy-nilly redefine terms that were instituted by councils. You know, however far back, um, I, I just don't, doesn't adhere to my canon of interpretation. Right, but uh, given that we do have this ordinance with, which means that in a way that the council has delegated this. It seems consistent. I prefer to get there a different way, because I agree with everybody else. And it seems like just the, a natural thing, why not have a vet downtown, particularly because there doesn't seem to be much downside um, to it. So um.
So, so ideally, you would amend the code. That would be the ideal solution. But from a time perspective, that's a lengthy process. So at some point, should we get to that point where we're amending the code? You would hope that we would add this as a permitted or conditional use so that you wouldn't have to make an interpretation in the future.
Yeah, yeah, or, or even just a different, you know, a different way of uh, again, because I didn't look at the, the actual. Um, but based on this, I, I think you'd get there anyway, even though veterinary is written elsewhere. So I think I would support it. Um. Lisa, question, comment?
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, I mean, a doctor's not a veterinarian, but a veterinarian is a doctor. Um, I do however, support where both of you are going, that this may be a once incident. And then perhaps the motion might be amended that we recommend that the code be changed in the future. Because I could see us wanting uh, to differentiate between large animal veterinarians, which we might not want in downtown. And um, family pet services. So, um, and that seems to be a good distinction for those veterinary zoning places elsewhere in the code. So um, that would certainly be my recommendation. And then Greg, I didn't know if you wanted to take comments from uh, the public, we're not members of the commission, but I'm not sure.
Oh, no, absolutely. I think the more the better. So uh, yeah, if no commissioners have questions, let's, you know, open it up. And Ashley, if anybody raised their hand, let us know.
We have Corinne with her hand up.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Corinne Martinez, so one fifteen Baker Street. Appreciate the discussion and actually some of the questions I had are being, being raised already, which, you know, to start with, you know. So we have um, zones that allow for veterinary hospitals. And there must be a reason for that. And we have a downtown business zone that doesn't include veterinary hospitals, so there must be a reason for that. And I can see how the conversation can go toward this is an office, um, which we'd be allowed in downtown. But when you start talking about things like, you know, um, a veterinary hospital. And there are larger, it's, doesn't exclude, you know, any type of animal, large animals. I can see some, I don't see that necessarily being consistent with a downtown application. I can see some, I don't see that necessarily being consistent with a downtown application. I do appreciate that people who come in and, you know, will, you know, drop their pets off or, um, for some treatment, um, might have to run some errands, um, you know, at the bank. Currently a hardware store, but you know, as the downtown develops that, that likely is businesses moving to a different location, which is going to be, you know, sort of more consistent with what its needs are. So, you know, is the long-term downtown vision the right place for, um, a veterinary hospital? Uh, is, is, is a question I do have. I appreciate that, that the applicant has stated that, uh, or the, uh, stated that they intend to add some retail. That would certainly, um, be more consistent with a, a downtown use, um, it seems to me. So, um, I, I have some concerns about there not being any, um, boundaries on the type of, um, animals that are being treated. And, uh, and, uh, would, uh, I'll try and use, um, Kate's language, you know, strongly encourage or enthusiastically encourage that the retail portion of this business be amplified. Because that is, uh, what we're trying to drive in the downtown area. Thank you.
Corinne, can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
A- a- assuming the ordinance didn't allow for doctors and dentists. So just assume it didn't allow that. Before was a dentist. You think that would be inconsistent with the downtown?
Well, I would just take note that the dentists and the doctors on Main Street have relocated, uh, out to Grand Avenue. Where there's more ample, um, uh, resources for those types of businesses. And we know, don't have, I think, maybe one remaining medical office on Main Street, but they are moving off of Main Street.
But that, that's a good point. And, and it, it seems like, and I don't know if you're out, here on behalf of, of any, uh, specific business or, or or the downtown business association, but it seems like we would want comment from them as well on some.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not here, I am a member of the board, the directors of the Winners Downtown Business Association. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board today. I'm also a business owner, um, uh, at various Gap Vineyards on Main Street. And I also own, uh, the commercial property at twenty-two Main Street. So, um, th- those are my, um, those are my interests. I'm, I'm here speaking as, uh, both as a, as a resident. I live at one fifteen Baker, which is, you know, three blocks away. And I, uh, own businesses and I, you know, am frequently in the downtown area, so. Um, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the W D B A today.
Okay. And, and Dave, we're, again, just discussing this, there's an action item at this point?
If you were to find that you find this to be consistent with the permitted uses that are allowed in the form-based code, then I would advise the doctor that she could move forward with her plans to, um, convert this to a veterinarian office. And, and that would be the end of it.
And, and, sorry, David.
No, that's fine. That's it.
The, the pro, the, the reason it would happen that way is because we're not acting in our official. I, I mean, basically, we're giving you some cover so you can make the decision or the city manager can make the decision, right? Cause this.
Yeah, I, I mean, you're, 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 I, I could have made this decision, but because of my uncertainty as to, you know, whether or not it, it would be something that, um, someone else would find consistent.
Right, we want, if I could just pop in, we felt that there was enough gray here that we thought it was important for the planning commission to weigh in tonight, and that's why we've brought it forward to the planning commission.
Lisa, you want to comment?
I do, thank you. Dave, are you suggesting that it would be by right? Or are you suggesting that you come back with conditions?
Well, it, it, so there's really only two ways. You, you could look at it as not by right, um, except that the doctor and dentist and office uses are all allowed by right that are on, on, uh, Main Street. So it would be tough to say you want to, uh, require a conditional use permit. But if, if that were the case, then I'd have to ask Joanna, who's may or may not be on this call anymore, whether or not you could make that call based on that section of the zoning code. Then it would be a public hearing. It would be a public hearing and it would come back with a opportunity to apply conditions.
I think my only concern with that would be that it not be a large animal hospital. Everything else seems to be consistent with, uh, doctor dental practice. So if the nature of their business for purposes of this is that they are, don't take large animals at this facility, and we move forward with a, with a amendment, um, later, I think that resolves whole sets of issues. But, um, I'd like to hear how that might play out.
Yeah, I, I think with that language, and again, I'd have to ask Joanna this. I think you could qualify your interpretation that in finding that it is consistent, you're, um, also finding that this would not allow for the care of large animals?
Are, are the applicants on?
I did not see, um, Dr. Berger, and I don't remember her associate's name. Dr. Berger was the one that I gave, um, the information to Ashley when she sent out the invite.
And do you have a timeline for this project?
Well, I don't think it's immediate, but I do know that they want to know, because I believe the property is for sale or for lease.
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, it, it just seems like e- either, you know, we're, I'm, I'm not sure it should be a policy decision, whether or not, at this point, whether or not veterinary offices are good or bad for the downtown or, you know, it's really a, an interpretation issue. Is this allowed or is it isn't allowed?
Yep, yep.
I, I know I wouldn't feel comfortable today saying that it is allowed. Because I think you have to find those instances where veterinary, veterinary office was used in the ordinance to figure out whether or not by excluding it here, it's implied that it's, you know, excluded. Because, and, and just, just to do it the right way. And, and I think that's, and that's better done with a little bit more research and, and waiting a month to figure it out. And if it does come down to a policy decision, then it should, we should definitely invite the downtown business association and others to, to contribute on this. Because in effect, and I think to Corinne's point, you're changing the, the dynamic. So it's, it's really a matter, does it work or does it not work? Not is it good or bad for the city. Lisa?
So I actually don't have a problem with thinking that, um, dental and medical office could be extended. I do have issue about, um, whether or not it's farm and large animal versus, uh, a family practice, which is more consistent with doctors. I agree with you, um, Vice Chairman Contreras, that it would be nice if some of the surrounding issues were answered. But I do want to make sure that everyone understands that a form-based code is very different from the other codes in the city. So they don't cross-pollinate necessarily, and one does not predicated on the other. So a form-based code is kind of its own unique thing, and the other zoning codes in the city are different. So I am not uncomfortable with that. I, where my discomfort comes in is, um, making sure that we're regulating it in the sense that it is a, uh, doctor's office consistent with doctor's offices that are already allowed. For example, a trauma center would not be approved under the farm-based code, which would might be more analogous to an animal, well, full hospital or a farm animal practice. So, um, so with that, I would agree on more research on some of those items.
Yeah, looking at the zoning code, um, it does, under the definition of a veterinary hospital, allow the scene of large animals. So it does currently prevent, provide you the ability to do that elsewhere where veterinary is listed as a, permitted or conditional use.
And I see that as the big distinction. One is a doctor's office for veterinarians where they see small scale animals and ancillary overnight. And the other is a large animal practice and/or like more expensive hospital facilities. As being the bigger distinction. And I do agree, I think, um, with the businesses that if you're locating that hospital there, then really you have to blend into the neighborhood in the same way as I see veterinary offices blend into their downtown counterparts in other cities.
Have, have the attorneys commented on this or has it not been brought to them?
It, it has not been brought to them. So it's something that we could ask them to weigh in on.
Well, I mean, I'm happy to.
Vice Chair have, um, offered the opportunity to table this pending additional research and to come back in August?
I think, yeah, I think that, that'd be great. Uh, do we want to, do we need a vote on that, Dave? Or is this just, does that happen automatically if we don't give you a yes?
You, you can just direct me to bring it back in August, and that, that's fine. It doesn't need a vote.
Okay.
And it, even though it may have been listed as a public hearing, it was a discussion item.
Commissioners, last comments or thoughts, questions?
I think it would help me to be able to ask them questions, get, do, do some more research and be able to ask the, the folks that are wanting to do this, um, some more questions. Otherwise, someone's going to bring their grizzly bear in there for a checkup.
Yeah, and I'm not sure why they didn't, uh, participate tonight.
Um, Vice Chair Contreras, Joanna Jen, Assistant City Attorney, has her hand up.
Okay. Hi, Joanna.
Hi, good evening. I would just, uh, echo the comments that, in, in support for taking it, um, and looking further into it and then coming back at the next meeting. And then I could address the, um, other comments that were raised at this meeting.
Yeah, so, um, unless anybody's opposed to tabling this, we'll direct Dave to bring it back.
Yeah, will do.
Thanks, Dave. And then thanks Corinne for, for, uh, bringing up those issues.
Thank you. Thank you for reconsidering or considering more deeply the issue. It's not, not reconsider. Thank you.
Okay. Dave, I, um, he is appointment of, of, of planning commissioner to the Affordable Housing Steering Committee? And, uh, bef- before you go into that, do we, I, I have a list of what committees people were on or the current commissioners, which ones, because I always seem to lose track of that, except for the one I'm on, so. Dave, you're, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I don't know if Ashley has the list. Um, I don't have it.
I don't have it in front of me. Um, I can get that together and send it out to you guys if you'd like this week.
Okay. Good, yeah, cause right now I'm on the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, and I think we're going to have two, correct?
Yeah, we need two. We need a second, uh, appointee for that committee. Uh, every committee that you're on or not, the commissioners are on, there's two members that sit on the committee.
Sorry, are you still on that committee in your other function?
Uh, I would happily volunteer to be the second.
I would also happily volunteer to participate.
Lisa, you're not on, on there anymore in, in, in a different capacity?
No, I'm not on there in a different capacity. I would like to, uh, remain there. Partly for continuity.
Uh, this is Jessica. I have a question about the committees. When you, uh, when a commissioner, um, joins one of the committees, are they on the committee for the duration of them being a commissioner? Or is it yearly? Or how often are those selected?
I don't think it coincides necessarily with any term. I would say you're on it and as long as you're on the planning commission until such time as you don't want to be on that committee. And you can then ask that you be removed and we'll schedule someone else to be appointed to it at the very next planning commission meeting. I don't think any of these have a, a date like your appointment to the planning commission.
So do we need a formal motion to select one person or?
I would say you should, yeah, someone should be either offered up or volunteer. And then the commission can confirm appointing those individuals to the various committees.
We have Lisa Baker that volunteered and Judith R. Say, sorry, that volunteered.
So I move to appoint Lisa Baker to the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
Uh, Ashley, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, um, Commissioner Altamirino.
Aye.
Commissioner R. Say.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Northrup.
Aye.
Commissioner Rose.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Contreras.
Aye. The next agenda item is two members, uh, getting, appointing two members to the design review committee.
I volunteer for that. Uh, I think I was in the last one, and so I would like to, uh, volunteer for this one.
I'll volunteer as well.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Do, do we, Ashley, do we need to split them or can we?
If there's only two volunteers and you have two positions, I, I think we can go ahead and motion and.
Do either.
Okay. So if somebody wants to make more, to make a motion?
I'll move.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Uh, Ashley, can we do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Altamirino.
Aye.
Commissioner R. Say.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Commissioner Northrup.
Aye.
Commissioner Rose.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith. And Vice Chair Contreras.
Aye. Agenda item G is to elect the new chair and vice chair of the planning commission? I, uh.
Do you want to take them one at a time? Maybe do chair first and vice chair second?
Sure. So we'll, we'll start off electing, uh, the chair. I don't know proper protocol, but, um, I'm a vice chair, so. I'd, I'd do chairman, that's. Everybody?
Um, I would like to appoint, uh, Lisa Baker to be chair.
Uh, with all due respect, I would, um, probably defer to whether Dr. Vice Chair wanted to run for chair.
Come on, Greg, raise your hand.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, if nominated and voted for, I, I'll, I'll be chair.
When you get to vice chair, I will happily consider vice chair, if that helps. I'll move Greg for chair.
Second.
Ashley, can we do a vote?
Commissioner Altamirino.
Hi.
Commissioner R. Say.
Hi.
Commissioner Baker.
Hi.
Commissioner Northrup.
Hi.
Commissioner Rose.
Hi.
And Commissioner Smith.
Hi.
I'm assuming I don't ask Vice Chair Contreras.
Yeah, yes, but.
You can't.
Vice Chair Contreras.
Hi.
Uh, okay. So on to vice chair. We have nominations for a vice chair.
I move that Lisa Baker become the vice chair.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we do a roll call vote? Ashley, please.
Commissioner Altamirino.
Hi.
Commissioner R. Say.
Hi.
Commissioner Baker.
Hi.
Commissioner Northrup.
Hi.
Commissioner Rose.
Hi.
Commissioner Smith.
Hi.
And Chairperson Contreras.
Hi.
Okay, so. I think we're set. We've gone through the agenda. Any last, um, comment from commissioners or staff?
So. Before you go, so, um, the two DRC members, you'll be getting an email on Thursday for potential. DRC meeting on the tenth of August, just a heads up. And it's to look at the, um, a proposed grocery store. On the corner of East Main and Grand Avenue. So that's it.
Any other comments? Lisa, yep, Lisa.
Uh, first, I'd like to say congratulations, Chairman Contreras, and I would also like to say thank you to the members of the planning commission for, uh, electing the vice chair. And I'd also like to, uh, take a moment. I didn't see anything publicly on this agenda, but I really want to thank the, uh, uh, planning commissioners who went off of of the commission for their. Dedication and hard work, and in particular, I was fortunate to be vice chair, Ellen Paul Meyer was chair, and I would really like to, um, thank him for his service.
Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else have any closing comments? Welcome to the new members. We're excited to have you. And with that, we'll adjourn, uh, eight seventeen.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.